Change the setting.
You done Keith with bills?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, really.
No. Oh. Questions each?
Nice fry, we're able to see crumble, blue cheese crumbles, that's pretty good.
All right. I've got past 7:30, so Vicki, are you ready? All right, so if you'll all join me and stand as we decide the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to tonight's city council meeting, so we've got a big agenda, but we've got a lot of things going on. So with that, I'll ask our clerk to do the roll call. Vicki?
Horn?
Present.
I know.
Here.
Tidgen?
Here.
Haley?
Ah, here.
Okay. Next on our agenda was some questions regarding our June 4th meeting, including the appointment of Gary France to a vacant position. So Michael Fleishman, our city attorney is here, he'll help address that as we move forward. So, Michael?
Thank you, Adam. So when they, when a board met on June 4th, there were two vacant seats at the time. You guys had what would be a five-member body at that point. I spoke with IML General Counsel Brad Cole on this issue. There was no research that came up with an answer to that in the state of Illinois. Other states have applied the policy that you take members plus the mayor minus vacancies to determine the number for the public body. Then you have to calculate the quorum based on it. So at that time, you guys had five members. Three would be a quorum, two council members were present at that meeting, plus mayor. Quorum was met. Two action items were voted on at that meeting. One being the appointment of Gary France and the other being the approval of the meeting minutes from May 7th and May 21st. And so with the questions that have been raised and out of an abundance of caution in speaking with Brad Cole again, we decided the best course of action is to have the full council that now with no question of whether or not a quorum is here to ratify those two action items that were taken at that June 4th meeting. So it's essentially voting to confirm the yes votes on those two items.
Did that help answer some questions? Karen, how about you?
Yes, I'm, actually.
So I think at this point in time, we would... So Michael, do you want me to ask for a motion to appoint Gary to that position? Or do we assume that it's good?
I would read it as, exactly as it's written on the agenda. The only other item that was approved at that meeting was the meeting minutes from May 7th and May 21st. So there can be a motion to ratify the appointment of Gary France combined with the meeting minutes from May 7th and May 21st, or there can be a motion to ratify those two agenda items without specifically stating them. Council and public knows what those items were and are aware of what's going to be voted on here tonight, and it was posted on the agenda. So that's the way I would move forward.
Can I get someone to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Karen Horn, is there a second?
So this is for both or both items, is that what you're...
Say, he said Karen made a motion, I think you need to clarify what motion that Karen made.
Do both, ratify the June 4th meeting items and Gary France to be appointed.
So it could be the two. Yes.
Both of them. So pointing Gary to the seat. And what are we ratifying for the other one again?
Be the meeting minutes from May 7th and May 21st. Those are the two things that were voted on.
And since there was no meeting...
Do we have any, I don't remember if we had any...
I don't think we were, most of us weren't here on the 21st.
There was no meeting on the 21st?
Yeah, so it just read that.
Seventh.
There was no quorum on the 21st?
Of May, these are the May minutes.
Right, and I don't think that there was a quorum in May.
Okay.
May 21st.
Right, there was no meeting.
I was at camp with a bunch of 95-year-old people.
And the May 7th one, so?
May 7th, that was a month ago.
And why are we having to re-approve the May 7th meeting minutes?
Because they were part of that agenda on June 4th. And so if the position's being taken that there wasn't a quorum and that those weren't valid votes, then we need to ratify it when there is a quorum here. I still believe that that meeting was valid and that the votes taken were valid.
For great, or for Gary, I mean.
For everything that occurred at that meeting, yes.
Yeah, I hold up that on my name as well. Still gotta do a ballot.
Where there's a second, you can't take roll. Right. Well, on... On those past items, or so what?
Well, they're not giving it for the... You could separate it. Or you could punt and wait unless the meeting minutes on May 7th and May 21st are approved at your next meeting, and then move on with the rest of the agenda items.
One second.
Okay. We have a motion by Karen.
Yeah.
And a second by Andy, is that correct?
Yeah.
And we're legal or not?
After legal, they're legal.
Which brings us to a roll call.
Horn?
Yes.
I know?
No.
Tidgen?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Okay, so at this point in time...
I suggest swearing Gary in again.
Gary, if you'd like to come forward, we'll have the clerk swear you in.
I, Gary France, who solemnly swear...
I, Gary France, who solemnly swear...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
I will support the Constitution of the United States...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois...
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
The duties of the Office of Alderman...
The duties of the Office of Alderman.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Okay, in your packets of amendments from the June 4th and June 18th discussion, excuse me, June 18th amendment, meeting, are there any additions or corrections to the June 4th, 14, 18 minutes?
Before we move on, I just want to ask, is, did you write because it lists Ward 3C? That's Ward 2, you should be correct.
No, it's Ward 3.
Is it Ward 3? Oh, that's right, you're, okay, I get that line next up right there, separates. Thank you.
Okay, back to where we're at. Are there any additions or corrections to the amendments in your packets for June 4th through June 18th?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes for June 4th and June 18th.
A motion from Karen Horn to accept the minutes for June 4th and June 18th as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary France.
Then we get approval if we weren't here for this, for the 4th. If we weren't here for the 4th?
So what's your question?
If I weren't here for the 4th, I, can I approve?
Same way.
You can, you can abstain, that's at your discretion. Your, your vote is whether or not you agree that those meeting minutes are what was reflected that happened in that meeting.
Which brings us, so was, yeah, we're assuming that Gary's still good, so he's okay to second that.
Yeah, if he was sworn in, yeah, after the ratification, he's sworn in. These meeting minutes are just stating what happened at those two meetings, regardless of whether or not anything that was taken was valid or invalid.
Correct.
It's just approving that those are the minutes that were accompanying what happened at those meetings, okay?
And if it's not worth the word, then it's on record anyways, on recorded.
Correct.
Okay, I'm bringing this to a roll call.
Horn?
Yes.
I know?
Uh, no.
Grant?
Yeah.
Tidgen?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Okay, that brings us to bills. I would accept a motion to pay all bills as presented as far as funds would allow. Motion by Andy Haley, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Karen Horn.
Roll call, Horn?
Yes.
I know?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Tidgen?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
All right, public comment, there were no cards turned in under public comment. Sorry. John, did you have any other questions during public comment?
No, I'm good, thank you.
No other public comments, so that brings us to department heads. Scott, you had some things you wanted to review. So I'll give you the floor and so hopefully 15, 20 minutes. Stay with me, I'll help you out. Fair enough.
I'll get through what I can as quickly as I can, and we'll go from there.
I don't mind, and they're dirty, but you won't?
All right, brought my little podium in just so I can shuffle through my paperwork a little bit better. I'll go through this as quickly as I can because I know the time is limited here. If you have questions or anything, that's completely up to you. If you want to ask, I'll be happy to answer whatever I can answer. Adam requested a meeting with me on April 19th. I came in for that meeting, we had a fairly lengthy discussion, so this really kind of comes from a place of, I want to clarify a bunch of things, provide the council some information so you're aware of what's going on, where I stand and where I see things. So if there's any questions as we go through, you know, maybe if I can get through it, then we can hit those. When I arrived at this meeting on April 19th, Vicki was here as well. I was not aware that she was going to be here. Adam did not tell me that, he just wanted to meet with me. We even had a quick text because I was running a few minutes late and I walked in and she was here. Always great to see Vicki, love her, glad she was here, a broad smiling face to, to the meeting. But she did attend that meeting, and I really have no explanation of why that happened. Adam started to bring up a bunch of different subjects and accusing me of a bunch of different things, both professionally and personally. And being the type of guy that I am, I don't take that very well, and I demanded evidence or something to back up what he was saying, which none was really presenting. And I'm going to go through a bunch of that here as well. So I'm going to lay out some very serious situations, and in my opinion, I think the councilings be aware of these and, and possibly even take some actions for them. And to be clear, there's more that I'm probably going to get to tonight. There's more than I've included in my notes, but there's probably, there's definitely more as I'm still going through things. So a lot of this is going to stem from my personal experience here, being, being here for a little bit over, a little over a year, a year and a half a season. I have been submitting FOIA requests, which I'm sure you're all aware or have heard at some point, including audio of the minute, or excuse me, of the meetings. And I just want to make my, my first comment on the audio that I've been requesting. In my recent FOIA, I did request the June 4th meeting audio, which I know there's already been some discussion about that, and I was told...
May I sit up here, Gary, is it okay?
Thank you. I was told that that audio no longer exists, does not exist. So why is going to be a pretty big question for me. At the city council meeting on March 19th, Chris Thomas brought up access to the city's website and Facebook, and essentially said that I refuse to give it or won't let her have it, or whatever you want to say. This could not be further from the truth. I have had no requests from her for access for the Facebook page that I run with tourism or the website that I built for tourism. Those are not mine, they are not my personal property, they are not on my server. That is your server, your property. Any of you can ask for it and you get it because it is not mine. And, and withholding that would be, as far as I'm concerned, would be criminal. But it's, that's city and taxpayer stuff, and I do not do that. So I've never had, I've only had one request for any kind of account access, which was for PayPal and Venmo stuff from Chris. That occurred on January 19th of this year. At 4:30 in the afternoon, I responded to her email by 5, at 5:56, and provided all the information that she wanted. That has been my only request from Chris. Quick, quick discussion on the tourism counter. The base of the, the base of the counter that's in the American Giants Museum now was donated, you guys discussed that. I remodeled it, used my own tools and some supplies and that sort of thing. Took two months for me to convince Bill Thomas to put that in the museum. He didn't want it in the first place, and then he finally agreed to it. When Adam called me about the counter, he said he wanted, I said I wanted to keep it because I have possible plans in the works and I've been working on some things. My request was pretty much omitted by Adam at the council meeting on March 19th, so I'm going to quote the transcript of the audio. "Adam, here's our options, the city retains ownership, we leave it there and move it to the, if the need arises, we can donate it to them. We can move it to the sewer plant and store it because we have no need for it. We can sell it to the Betterment Fund for what it costs to remodel. We don't have a need for it anywhere else." "Karen, I think we just need to donate it." "Adam, I get tired of all the bitching about it. I've heard it from Scott and I'm sick of it." Another council member that I could not identify in the audio, "What does Scott want to do with it?" "Adam, he wants to move it to storage." And then Adam stated it was about $400. Some of the other major issues that I think you guys need to address as well with the AGM, not only the counter, it's kind of a dumb little pitsy thing, but I don't like when I have an option for it and it gets kind of basically withheld from you of what my plans were, so now we no longer have that counter. But other things with the AGM are major compliance issues. Since last year, since it opened, I brought this to the attention not only of, to Bill Thomas, I might have even said something to Dale Colaw, and I've mentioned it to Adam several times, and I'm sure Chris probably a couple of times in some of those same meetings that, that we all attended. It is not life safety and fire compliant. To my knowledge, it still is not, it is not ADA compliant. And my attempts to basically mitigate that, rectify that, to, to make it safe for the public have been ignored by every entity that I've informed of it, and nothing has happened. I also have some major concerns, and I brought these up since I, probably within a month or two of me starting, of all the work, the free labor and other things the city's been providing to the Atlanta Betterment Fund and the new museum specifically. Even on tonight's agenda, there's an item for a sign. I don't know exactly what that, if that's for the Bunions sign or not. As you all know, I had worked on that, so I put it in stall mode to figure out what this is because I have no communication coming from anyone of what's going on. So I have no idea what that is, even though it would pertain to the department I, I run. Now we're going to talk about the reimbursements. This has been a topic at several meetings, I know a lot of you have brought it up, I've listened to these audios. So I'm going to explain what it is because the explanations you have are wrong. The, I have to pay personally to be reimbursed. I was told during the interview, the first, the interview when I came in for this position, and the first meeting after accepting the position, that I'd have a city credit card. Process, the process changed in writing with the meeting that I had with Chris, and she provided a document that's in your packet, that was on August 24th of last year. The process further changed down the road and had additional restrictions. This came via email on September 4th of last year, you also have in your packet. The latest thing was this new, anything over $200 must be pre-approved. And then I'm going to just note to you that Adam will mention this in a meeting here when I get to the transcript. Any invoices that may come from my company must include receipts and the information's in there of what that receipt must have, which makes my stock ineligible for reimbursement. So there's been a lot of things that I have created because they come off my shelf with my company, which was all known when I hired on that I have this ability to do it. And because I can't produce a receipt for what I paid for it, because I buy 1,000 of them and needed 20 of them, there's no receipt. So I've eaten that. I, I basically just got screwed out of that money. Audio of transcript from December 19th. "Adam, Scott will be here," meaning the next meeting, "to give the council an update as we move forward to 2024. Here's an opportunity for us to have some discussion on what direction we want to go with that position. Do we want it to move forward? If we get, if we get the right person? Andy, I want clarification, is Scott no longer serving as a tourism director? With the comment you made, I was a little confused. Adam, yes, he is. Chris and I are going to meet with Scott on what we want for the year." Chris then continued, "Adam, I have always viewed the tourism position similar to Michael as a city attorney. Keith, you," speaking to Chris, "just said, since it's in administration, then you are over Michael too. Is our tourism director under contract? Adam, no, he wouldn't sign it and I let him get away with it." Adam further went on, "We never had a contract with Whitney." "Chris, yes, we did have one with Whitney. We didn't have, we didn't the first 12 months, but we rectified that." "Amber, when Whitney signed it, what did it state?" "Andy, you can't mix. It sounds like we're going to try, we're trying to combine an employment position, but saying, oops, we're really not. You, you are really not." "You, you are really not." Andy further goes on, "As a contract employee, technically, we cannot dictate." "Chris, even though we pay him?" "Andy, even though we pay him." "Andy, a contract employee typically doesn't get their schedule set. A lot of organizations, a lot of people get into a lot of trouble for contracting employees instead of payrolling them, and there's no way we should be dictating to him." "Amber, so his contract is up in May?" "Chris, he never signed one. He refused." "Andy, if he never signed a contract, then his employment is a will. He's an, he is an employee, and we haven't been paying employment taxes." "Keith, he knows more about tourism than anyone in this room." "Adam, so one of the things that we have concerns about is somebody outside of the community. Do they really know what we want as far as the Atlanta community?" "Keith, who drafted that job description? And why wasn't the council privy to the position before it was posted? I feel there's a lot of secrets." "Amber, does the job description say it's a contract employee?" "Chris, no." "Amber, this puts us in a pickle." A few minutes later, Amber, "How does he pay for his expenses?" "Adam, he pays for it and gets reimbursed, or he can use the card from Kelly at City Hall." "Adam, Scott," Adam continues, "Scott's is very simple. You want to do something, come in here and Kelly will cut you a check for that expense. If you want to print it off, print off a bunch of stuff, then you pay for it and give Vicki the receipt, and she'll cut you a check by the end of the week. It's very simple." "Amber, so he," meaning Scott, "knows ahead what's going to be approved or not approved?" "Adam, yes, absolutely, he knows. Yes." "Amber, how do we know what's authorized to purchase or if it's approved?" "Adam, it's a $500 purchase limit." Note that. That's my saying, note that. "Chris, it's like Whitney wanted to purchase ducks that we approved, and we, and we approved it before she purchased it." "Keith, it's a lot to ask for someone to purchase with his own card." "Adam, they walk right in here and, they walk right in here and tell Kelly, and they can walk right out on Friday with a check, maybe that day." "Chris, I guess I don't understand." "Keith, he can call Kelly and get a PO?" "Chris, yeah, if it fits the guidelines." "Keith, that's my question. What are the guidelines?" So let's talk first about my refusal to sign. I was originally told there'd be a contract. This was during the interview, and we also talked about it at the first meeting or two, or several meetings or whatever. But nothing's ever provided to me. I inquired about the contract within the next month or two and was told that this is something they need to get to me. After a council meeting, Adam, Chris, and I walked into the office, and I brought up the contract. Adam said he didn't see a need for it, and the only reason to have one was because Whitney left with two weeks' notice, and they need more like 60 or 90 days' notice. I asked what the mitigation of a breach with the notice would be. Adam said there was none. I said, then it's a worthless contract anyway if there's no penalty for breaching it. Adam said, that's why I don't think we need one anyway. Just to be clear, I did not refuse anything to sign a contract. In fact, I even said something like that. I'll sign anything if there's no breach of contract problem, then it doesn't matter anyway. Give it to me, I'll sign it right now. Said me some kind of comment like that. Whitney's contract. Chris stated in this December 19th, 2023 council meeting that Whitney signed a contract after the first 12 months. April of this year, April 23rd, I submitted a FOIA to the city for all contracts and agreements with Whitney, including drafts and all signed versions. I received only one version, signed by Adam, not signed by Whitney. You've never had a legal contract with her. It's in your packet. My latest reimbursement. So talking about the reimbursement stuff, I submitted an email to Kelly and Adam on May 15th of this year at 9:10 in the morning. The invoice was worth $188.65 under the $200 requirement that I'm put under. Kelly acknowledged receipt via email. As of today, 48 days later, I have yet to be reimbursed. My end-of-the-year report, originally due on December 19th of last year at the council meeting. This is from the audio of that meeting. Amber, speaking to Chris, "Did you have an update on tourism for the end of the year, on the end-of-the-year report?" "Chris, he's working on that. We're expecting it in January." "Keith, so we'll get it in January, but will he be, so we'll get it in January, but will he be presenting?" Chris, as far as I know. My end-of-the-year report was submitted to Chris and Adam on December 15th of last year before that meeting. In a series of emails in, through the rest of December and even in early January, I was told, and these are in your packets as well, that changes need to be made. And these are basically from Chris. Multiple times, I requested, "What changes? What's wrong?" "Well, there's some things we need to enhance or change or add or remove or whatever." You know, it was kind of a roundabout way. And she just refused to answer anything and kept saying, "We need to meet in person. We need to meet in person. We'll do this in person." So basically, it was a complete refusal to tell me what in the world was going on and why my report was less than adequate or what it was missing or anything. So we met on January 8th at 3:30 here at City Hall. That was myself, Chris, and Adam. I was basically pushed to change my report and omit the negative feedback about Chris and an instance with her at the AGM. I was told the council didn't need to know this, and it wouldn't be helpful for me to keep my job if this was brought out. I refused to remove this complaint, and you all saw that in my report. Another issue that's come up recently are these city flyers. So we have these flyers now that are going around and have been done. I knew nothing about this. I had no communication. Just don't know. The first time I saw it was here at a council meeting, and I saw it sitting out, grabbed one and left and looked at it later. This on the back of the original one shows, not only does it show the city logo on it, it shows city tourism and my contact information and the website. So it looks like it's from the city. I've had people ask that. They just assumed it was a city tourism situation. Right underneath that are donations for the Betterment Fund and the museum. So it looks like the city is authorizing the solicitation for donations for a private organization. I brought this up to Adam during that meeting that I originally discussed. We talked about it a little bit. Obviously, he talked to somebody about it. The back has been changed. It's still asking for donations, but it still looks like it's from the city. And in fact, I'm, it's an assumption Chris did this. He said it was from the Betterment Fund, so I don't know who personally did it. But they even added the actual city's official municipal website to it, which just adds more to what this flyer is, even though it's from a private organization. And these are all, not only is that a city logo, but this is a city-owned image as well. So they're using those images for private use. And also, in one of my FOIA requests, was provided a copy of a letter on Atlanta Betterment Fund letterhead. This is in your packet. Their letterhead also uses your city logo. Pavlov Media, during a meeting last season, Bill and Chris wanted to meet with me, so we met at their home because there was a power outage or something. There was a storm, and I think it was a power outage. During the meeting, Bill told me that Pavlov Media would be providing free internet service to the American Giants Museum because it's a requirement of a grant. Bill told me that Pavlov is going to provide free service since it's a city building. I told Bill it's not a city building, and he told me twice that I need to quote, "not worry about it," end quote, and wouldn't take any more questions on the subject. Tourism's position has become clear to me that it was created for Bill and the Betterment Fund. It was created to get a tax-funded or municipal-funded position to run the new museum. Of everything that I've seen, everything that I FOIA it and all the dates and everything, it appears that that is extremely clear. Some of the communications that I have, because I have all Whitney's stuff, looks like that this, and I'm not speaking for her, and I will not presume to speak for her because I have not talked to her about this. But her abruptly leaving and during our meetings when I started telling me that Whitney was refusing to go in, work with Bill, wouldn't put her office in there, that sort of thing, all was backed up by everything else so far that I have found in digging through stuff that she saw the same problems that I saw or that I have been seeing. In your packet is an email that came from other FOIA stuff where you can see that Bill was pushing me, giving me direction on employment and job situations, putting volunteers in there and keeping it open. And he and I had a few choice words. This was actually in front of Dale and everybody and the two ladies that I do not look for. Bill Thomas also has some extraordinary access to city information. From a FOIA, I learned that Bill Thomas is getting information from Kelly and Adam on matters that don't concern him or shouldn't concern him. An email on December 29th, 2023, that you have in your packet, Bill states he talked with Adam about me and my paychecks. Bill then asked Kelly for additional information on my checks. Why that's Bill's businesses beyond me. Finally, tonight I want to bring up Chubbies, and I appreciate the time, but let me get through this. At a recent council meeting where I attended and gave a report, after my report, Adam brought up Chubbies and Savannah and so forth. Adam told the council here during the meeting that Savannah at Chubbies told him she didn't know anything about what was going on with tourism or if she would be serving food for the buses like she did last year. Twice during that meeting, I told Adam I did communicate with her, and she is aware of what's going on. And both times that this was brought up in the meeting by Adam, I disputed it. The next morning, I contacted Savannah. Savannah told me that Adam was completely wrong and what he told you was untrue. She said she talked with Adam and asked him about rumors going around town that the city was going to fire me. She asked if this was true, and Adam refused to answer her. She said she needed to know because otherwise she won't know if she's making lunches for the buses or not, and she needs to order the food and do all the preparation for a tour bus that comes in, which is why she was asking. And this left her without any answers. So in general conclusion here, in my opinion, there's some very serious situations going on in this town at the highest levels. I bring this to the council's attention because you all need to know, and I won't keep you in the dark. Atlanta is a wonderful community, which is why I'm still here. It's easy to resign and just let the problem be somebody else's problem down the road, but that's not me. And I don't believe that's most of you on the council. I appreciate the time, and I appreciate the mayor allowing me to get through that. Are there any questions? All right, we're going to move on. Under old business. So in your packets, we've got a solar ordinance that we had the attorney draft. And so let's kind of review that as we move forward. So one of the things we talked about for our solar ordinance was wanting to make sure that we didn't have ground-mounted systems in town. We currently have no solar ordinance, none. And we wanted to at least get started with something. So we used this from a nearby community and had Michael put this together for us. So as we looked at it now for a couple weeks, one of the things that was questioned was on the back page for dash eight, dash eight penalty. So what we need to do is have some sort of penalty in this code. And one of the suggestions with the other ordinances that we have in the community would be a sum of not less than $250, nor more than $750. So that's kind of where I want to start this off and let you guys tell me what additional changes you want to make or where do we go from here. So I think, Andy, I'll start with you a little bit.
Well, since we can't, well, they forbid them from me on the ground.
Correct.
I, I don't think I have anything else.
Amber, how about you?
So it's a golf course, and you get hit by a golf ball and shatter it or something.
No different than if somebody hits my house.
So it's not...
It's the same as a window. Yep, you build it on the golf course, it's your problem.
Do they shatter and go, like, is the glass going to go all over the golf course? Is it a hazard?
Well, no, it's on private property. All right.
So it's far enough away from the...
Correct, that's what I'm saying. They annex the lot next to them, so they have the whole lot next to them, and that would be impossible. I didn't mean annexed. I meant bought.
The entire lot can be...
Yeah, it's already done. Oh, yeah, it's already done.
They bought the lot. We only have one solar panel on, so they bought the house and the neighboring lot, combined it together to make one large lot.
And the solar panel is swimming pool.
Is what?
Solar panel is swimming pool.
Yep. And my pool.
They already did.
Okay. Gary, how about you?
I'm not sure if there's anybody that's got solar panels in town yet, or I haven't seen any that are mounted on the ground. But if there were somebody before this ordinance, if it passes, go ahead and ask their provisions for that.
Grandfathers.
Okay.
Yeah. So to my knowledge, Gary, to your point, there is only one in town ground-mounted so far.
Okay.
And that's what really spurred this conversation. Keith, how about you?
Oh, the only thing I have is, do they have the pole building permit to install or something like that?
Okay, so yes, they have. And so what we've used, just like other municipalities in the past, has been an accessory building. So we had to use the same format that was used in the rest of the county. So that's what the guidelines currently use with the one we have. But yes, to answer your question.
Thank you. That's it.
Karen?
How is this penalty determined? Less than 250 or more than 750?
So that the fine is per diem, per day. So per day that the violation exists, the city can request a fine minimum of 250 per day or anywhere in a range up to 750 per day. And so that's the city's request regarding what would be a sentencing under a code violation. It's ultimately at the judge's discretion. The way that the code is written, it would ultimately give the judge the discretion to assess a fine in that range. No lower than 250, no more than 750 per incident, per day.
Okay, thank you.
And that's what the general provision is. General penalty is in your code now. If there's a violation of any code section, then the general penalty is not less than 250, not more than 750. There are a couple ordinances, and I don't know off the top of my head, that have differing penalties. But by default, if nothing's listed in the code or in that ordinance section, then the general penalty is going to be applied.
What amount is it before we put a lien on a property? Do we have a study?
It doesn't matter. It's that, there's no policy in place. If you get a fine against somebody, the city can put a fine, a lien against the property for as low as $250 plus court costs or as maximum as.
All right, any other discussion before I ask for a motion to accept or reject? Mayor?
Sure. My first, Alan, just a reference from a fire safety standpoint, as a fire chief who went through a solar ordinance in Edgar County. If there's, and I don't know what's in the ordinance, but as a suggestion, your fire department personnel need to have training specific to the systems that are being installed. Someone needs to provide that to them because there's so many different systems out there, so many different regulators. You do have a fire safety concern that they may not be aware of. Whether it's ground-mounted, roof-mounted, there's a ton of variables that I would seriously consider implementing something there that forces whoever's putting it in to provide that training to those personnel. And I'm sorry to interrupt your meeting, but I wanted to make sure that got in there because I think it's really important.
Yeah, lithium with the high school.
Yep, we had one of those at our high school. That's exactly right. Gymnasium, cop fires.
It's not uncommon. It's a problem.
They don't use any lithium in these solar panels, do they?
They use all kinds of elements.
Because a lithium fire causes a thermal runoff, meaning you can put it out multiple times. It's going to keep burning until it stretches all the way down.
They may use one of the batteries.
Yeah, yeah. That just caught my, when you said that, that just parked out in my head.
The Edgar County ordinance has a laundry list of things, all on the safety and hazardous side of it, because there is hazardous materials that are going, that go into the production of them. But if there is a fire, even if it's not lithium, you do have hazardous material that's going to runoff.
Yeah, same thermal runoff, right? So the thermal runoff on top of the house really concerns me just because...
How about getting in the ground?
In ground, to me, is a problem. I mean, that's containable, you know? I mean, if it starts on a roof and you have thermal runoff, I mean, they'd be out there by middle of night, but... Yeah, the fire safety part. And I had mentioned in the previous meeting that I thought that whoever installed it should be licensed. There's some type of license, whether it's electrical or whatnot, solar, some type of certificate stating.
It's not part of the building permit or...
Well, so remember, the roof mounted systems don't require a building permit from anyone. Anywhere in this county, a roof mounted system did not require a permit, only ground mounted.
Can we do that as a city? Can we require that as a city or it's not?
I can't answer that question.
I don't know. Typically, the city can allow for certain restrictions. I don't know if that's gonna be over burdensome for a private owner to get a permit to put electrical panels on. I can look into that. As this code is written now, there's no permit requirement.
So as this code, as the ordinance says, there's no ground mounted. So that eliminates the need for a building permit that we had to discuss on the prior one that's grandfathered on the golf course. Okay, so any future ones, there won't be any ground mounted ones. So it only applies to a roof mounted system. So this is, I think, very similar to Tremont, is that correct?
That's correct, yep.
And then I think the side note for us is to have that conversation with the fire department, not related to this ordinance, but related to what kind of training are they, have they done or are they doing? Because we probably have... I'll bet there's a dozen roof mounted systems. Is that a fair statement? Is there a dozen?
At least.
Okay. Keith, what do you think?
Uh, yeah, I would say pretty accurate. Yeah.
So that training from the fire department side would be different than this ordinance. Obviously not related to this. It's something we need to follow up on. All right, so what's your flavor?
There is a permit requirement in this ordinance. Amber, I misspoke, 484. Says roof mounted solar energy systems shall be permitted by a building permit in all zoning districts where there's a principal structure. Application shall be submitted to the city zoning officer.
In that permit, does it require work to be done by a licensed certified whatever?
There is nothing in the ordinance saying. I don't know if there are licenses that are issued to... I'm assuming an electrician is involved at some point. But man, as far as construction type work and mounting the hardware.
It's all new. The solar EV, NFPA struggling just to even come out with a condition to cover batteries, let alone all the new stuff is... It's a problem in the fire industry right now.
Just based on recent history, recent history in the last 12 months, 12 months, 13 months, 14 months? It just scares me.
Yeah, me too, I mean, yeah.
But people are gonna keep putting it in because...
Well, that's a great point, I mean, that Michael made though because it connects to the electrical panel, I'm assuming.
Right.
I don't have one, but typically you're gonna wanna license the electrical contractor to make that connection.
Or you want to, yeah.
Do we need to put something in here specifically stating that it can't be a do it yourself project?
The ultimate utility provider has to come out and make sure that it's compliant too to hook up to the grid, which the ICC is gonna regulate that. So there's gonna be a lot of red tape at play. Somebody's not gonna be able to just hook up. I would assume Amarin doesn't allow you to access their boxes to hook those things up. Now, could people do it? Yes, they could, but they're gonna have problems with Amarin at that point too and the ICC.
So once this application goes to the zoning board, do we get copies of the city then and then we keep that on file?
The city has a copy of every permit, yeah. But like I said, we didn't want to wait any longer. When I talked to Michael, he feels we're on the front side, but definitely not early adapters because like I said, we have 20 or so in town. But there's a lot of municipalities that haven't even...
And we can update this if needed, if we need it to make amended or whatever. But at least we have something to get started with.
Same problem could exist where if there are issues that come up that aren't addressed by this code and then an amended code is passed, you can't retroactively enforce that. Those people would be grandfathered in too. It's more of proactive, as those issues come up, if you need to modify the code, you can't.
Or the feds come out with something.
There's gonna be more guidance on this, absolutely.
Amber, I think, do you ask if a homeowner could do it themselves? Who asks, sorry, I need to hear. So I was thinking about that and I think that's kind of a gray area because like you get all my plumbing code. So Amber can't go plum a house over next door that someone else owns. But if that homeowner chooses to plum that house themselves, they can do so without being a licensed plumber as long as it's inspected afterwards and meets code. So that's a gray area, you know? I guess what I'm trying to say is a homeowner could probably do it if they actually live in the house and they're doing it as long as it's inspected. But outside of that, I think, but I don't know. That's the plumbing code, I don't know the electrical code. I guess what I'm trying to say is that the homeowner, I think, could install legally. I don't know, that'd be a question I would have. I don't see what they could if they owned the home, I guess.
But it's going to the grid, that's one thing somehow. Anyway, you have a comment?
In every dark, as we've dealt with this very issue, as a DIY, do it yourself person, if I install my system in my garage where I'm pulling off of my 220 feet off my main panel, if I don't put in the right transfer switches, even if I do put them in, I'm up and running. Amarin never sees it because my meter's outside. They will never know that I've even done it unless they look up and say, hey, you got panels, we need to inspect this. Without an inspection criteria, that's where the problem comes in. You gotta have an inspection of the complete install to avoid those type of problems. Because we see homeowners doing this all over the countryside and rural areas. And that's the first thing we're looking at is that you do a proper transfer switch. Because if not, you can backfeed the system and you could have a lineman out there thinking the line is dead and it's not. So now it's not just fireside, you've got your lineman out there thinking the line has some power to it because they've shut it down. The line's got a solar system that is energized because it wasn't properly installed properly.
So Keith, under number D and the safety, all solar energy systems shall be installed by a qualified solar installer, plan sealed and or letter signed by a structural engineer or architect indicating the weight and load for restructuring and other things.
And then there's a definition of qualified solar installer there? So that prevents do it yourself? Unless...
Yeah, I think, I think I'm making a weird argument. I mean, the way that it sounds is I'm just versing it up of what how plumbing code reads and as being a licensed plumber, you can't do it yourself, like you said. But I still have to have that inspected by the, whoever the inspector is, whether it's county, state, local. So I would go as far as maybe adding a bold point that all after installation must be signed off on by a third party licensed electrician or inspector. I mean, because we don't have anyone in that capacity for the city that could make that call. Whether it's safe or not is the reason I'm saying...
Probably nobody at the county either, Keith.
That's someone's license.
I don't care about their house, it's people next to them that are...
Right.
They choose it themselves and some happens, but living next to them or somebody else living next to them, I wouldn't want them to be impacted by...
Okay. So what was your suggestion? We'll have Michael, if you want, we'll have him add it.
Well, I think that there needs to be, yeah, I read that about, you know, the licensed solar installer. But I think there does need to be some type of competent person, whether it's a licensed electrician. And I don't know the answer because I haven't researched enough on the solar side of who does that, whether it's a third party licensed electrician, electrical company, someone with a state of Illinois license or...
I think that needs to be brought and attached to the application so that they can say they did it or if they didn't and I don't know. But matters are if we're thinking about...
I mean, in that way, I mean...
You want? Can you check on that, we'll move forward.
Just real quick, Mayor, I don't know if Amarin does it statewide, but I know in our region, Amarin actually does the inspection. They will come out and... I don't know if that's a policy.
That's in this one. It says if it's hooked up to a public utility, the public utility company has to come out and do an inspection. The same thing like the example you gave, if they never hook up.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So if somebody buys a, gives a solar panel, does that company contact Amarin so that they're aware that we should be...
I don't think they do, yeah. Can buy it from T-Move. I mean, they're...
Good lord.
I mean, they got pop-up companies all over the world just going door to door, kind of like Rupers, like, you know, I am not solar.
Go on Amazon.
Yeah, so it's...
All right, we will, Michael, check on that. We'll make a couple tweaks to this. We'll move on, be ready to vote on it next meeting. Fair enough?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. In your packets is the invoice regarding the Van de Venter Engineering Repair for Lift Station Number Three. We've talked about this. We reviewed it. They've got a two-year inspection with the city. They've been doing work for the city for 20 years. And so we have some questions and I think those have been answered.
You got good feedback from them, Mike?
Yeah, they got an office down in Calhoun City where we got and I've talked to quite a few people and they're a good company, reputable.
So if they weren't, we wouldn't have been dealing with them for 20 years. So I would accept the motion to approve the approve the proposal to fix our lift station. Number three, on the wet well piping rehab proposal dated March 6th with the number, proposal number 591736 as in your packets.
I'll make the motion.
This is part of that stuff he's already submitted for the...
No, this is for the lift station.
Lift station, yeah, absolutely. So this is where we got a lift to get to our sewer system. And these all gotta be repaired. And we have a two-year service agreement with those guys and they come and inspect them and keep them working so that they don't break down. And it's paid for out of our, on your accounts under the sewer. There's, we put money in there, you'll see it on there?
I accept the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Keith Iver and a second by Karen Grants. Move forward with the Van de Venter Engineering Repair of Lift Station Number Three. Roll call.
Roll call.
Korn?
Yes.
Iver?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
engine?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Okay. Somewhere in your packets, we don't need to vote on it. I just included it, the update from Kevin. Should have one sheet in there for whatever reason. I'm missing mine right before we talked about the total cost of the water rehab for the painting of the water tower. Remember when you talked to us for the last time? So he sent us a sheet to just summarize that. We're not gonna act on it. It should be in your packet, I might have misplaced mine. Is it in there?
Yeah.
That is for your information only, so you can see the two projects. And I think we could be prepared to move on that in August. The Illinois Water People will be here July 16th, next meeting, July 17th, whatever that is. Okay, any other question on that? I mean, Kevin talked a lot and I asked you to send me an updated sheet. Okay, we'll just keep that on the agenda. All right, so Nick is here. Two weeks ago, he presented an economic development assistant application to the council. And under this project, he talked about giving some advertisement and what he was gonna do. So he brought us all the information regarding this project. Nick, why don't you tell us a little bit about how that's gonna benefit the restaurant? You can see the estimated annual sales to the restaurant, the map's approach and approaches are all there. You can see he's gonna pay for 50% of the project. He's asking 20% assistance from the program. And so, Nick, tell us about what, how you think that's gonna benefit your restaurant.
There's some people off the road on the highway.
When people come to the restaurant, how many? You talked to a lot of them. Is Route 66 a big draw for you?
Yes, it is. I get a lot of feedback, you know? They start such and such weekends, you know? They tell me they have a great time, you know? Good experience, you know? They see the all bunyan and everything and they come and eat there. They say everything is good about the town. I haven't had no one feedback about the Route 66 and everything. So whatever we're doing, we're doing a great job. We just need to keep moving.
So your project, under the project description, two things, increase the business at the restaurant. You can see where your dollars are at now on your application and help increase spending in Atlanta by attracting more people to the community. The project includes purchasing a giant waitress. The image is attached. And then they're asking for, basically they have a concrete pad on which the giant will stand and a small pad for a picnic table. And so coming up, you can see completion dates on what possibly might happen and a contribution from the city of $4,600. And you can see the attached budget. So I will, we talked about this last time you guys looked at it. Questions for Nick?
I have a question for Nick, I have a question for you.
Sure.
Did we not, did we or did we not, I cannot remember, pass the new application?
Okay, so this is the application. Then we have a second form that talks about reimbursement.
Right, but what I'm saying is, my question is, is if we pass it, did we not, and I don't know, I don't know. When was the last time, or have we ever, has there ever been any tiff money cranked to country air?
There would have been tiff money used to country air when we did your parking lot, which would have been...
That was still 80/20 the same way.
Yeah, and it would have been...
What year was that?
About five years ago.
Okay.
Maybe longer.
Yeah, five to six years ago.
I just, since we put that time, that time period in there, I just wanted to...
It's a fair, it's a fair ask, yeah, no. And that's what this is for, to ask questions.
Did we need to sign too? Did we do something with the...
The sign in the parking lot was together.
That was...
That was together.
Yeah, I think I paid like 60 and the city helped me 20, something like that. And as far as remodeling, I didn't wanna come to the city, you know? I got a loan from the bank, so, you know? Yeah, I'm just asking, but I got last, the last proposal, and this new one is $250 higher than what it was. It went from 19% to 20%.
Well, so, show me your numbers, Gary. They should be a total of 23,850. Does that seem right?
And I'm, I'm, this question, I just, I think this is pretty much, it looks like the same packet, yeah.
Should be 48,50.
It was, the previous one was 81,19, and this new proposal is 80/20. But it's, there's just, it's just different numbers. I just wanted to check and make sure.
Oh, okay.
What it changed.
Yeah, .3600 on this sheet, .13350, whatever, 250 difference.
I never caught that.
I'm just assuming that there's probably been some price increases along the way, or...
Okay, that's a question. Anyway, we're still looking at a 80% to 20% reimbursement, looking at...
So I can just ignore it.
Where's she going to go?
That's pretty different.
Right.
Towards Casey's. Right in the end there by the Cedar's Department. I saw on Cedar's Department.
Okay, on the corner there?
Yeah, right at the corner there.
Can you see it from the entrance, or is it...
Yes. It's going to be 20-inch, oh.
20 feet.
20 feet, I'm sorry, 20 inches. I hope you can see it. I mean, that's the reason. I mean, that's our power lines that stop off when you pull from here, so you can see it.
Did you have the map, Amber?
For the attachment?
Well, sometimes, sometimes. I don't think I have them all, sometimes. Here's the location. You can pass around.
I'm going to use the restroom now, quick.
Sure. Well, we're passing the map around. You guys can look at that.
Hey, what do you think?
Oh, you're Scott, okay.
First lady of all the giants, so that's a bad question.
Wife's idea. Happy wife, happy life, isn't it?
You know, that's what Sean says too. It's fine, have another talk.
I told you, she was going to get that or her blue's brothers.
So is this going to look like her?
Huh? I hope not. I see her every day when I see her.
You don't want a try for a version of her?
She wants to put an apron, she wants to put, my goodness.
Cameras on.
That's a lie.
I can't wear a wine picture.
I should have gone and go see that. Why do I need that to look like my wife? I work every day. Now why, why does that question?
Well, I thought maybe she wanted it to look like her, since it's her.
I see her every day. I see her every day.
All right, so...
I'll be scared of the rush. I'll be scared to go outside, so.
Other questions for Nick? Trying to keep this moving forward.
I'll, I will make the connection, but I think it should look like his wife.
There you go. Keep me canceled, then I'll hop in for myself.
I have a motion for my intention to approve the economic development assistant application for the country air restaurant giant project. Total project cost 23,850. City's share...
We have the money first, right?
City's share would be 20% of that, or 48,500, as remembered in our packet.
A second motion.
A second by Jerry Frantz.
How about I make my little...
Name tag on it?
Roll call.
Roll call. Horn?
Yes.
Iver?
Yes.
Frantz?
Yes.
Ditchin?
Yes.
Like that. Your remodel looks great, Nick. Thanks for investing in the community.
I just paid for it, and my wife's idea again.
It was a great one.
Told me to not stress. She said, just pay for it, I'll do the rest.
Yes, I did tell her.
All right, so in your packets is the 24, 25 appropriation ordinance. I've worked with Kelly and Vicki over the last week or two with this. I want to highlight and go through some things, and then we'll be prepared to vote on it at the next meeting. So, front page, really no additional changes. Municipal garbage, a slight change of 169,000. A slight increase on page two, so follow along with me. When you look at it, and we've got questions, we'll address those. Slight change in the swimming pool expense because of chemical costs.
This employee salary, does it take into account the increase or minimum wage?
Up to all issues. Thank you for reminding me of that. Number three, streets and alleys, so all that has been up to take into consideration our pay raises, cost of living increases, and everything else. Added more for materials, which is things that the city buys to keep everything going, from bolts, your name goes under there. The snowplow truck payment, that really is not just a snowplow, so I'm going to have Kelly change that. That truck payment is in there. It's a hundred grand for a backhoe purchase, maybe. I talked with Paul and Sarah today. They're not sure that we are ready to move yet, and I'll discuss options on that. Really, we use the backhoe a lot, but it is not used. Keith, you and I talked about that. It's road time. We fix water lines and do a lot of little digging, rather than create big, every day, we're going to go out and load 300 tons of rock. We just don't do that. It's running great. It's got, I'll give you the hours in a minute here. It's got, they were like 6,700 hours, yeah, 6,700 hours. They're thinking, we run 400 hours a year on that, is what we run, okay? So it's a 16-years-old. So it needs to be on the list. Certainly, I'm not taking it off the list, but I'm saying it's not necessarily a have to. We may put a pickup truck on there, probably a used three-quarter ton straight truck like the maroon was. For those of you that want to visualize, the maroon pickup truck, 100,000 miles, 2,005, I believe. And I'm going to do some checking for you on that. I think we can get by probably for 30,000 to 40,000 on a truck that's a couple, three-years-old.
And who do we need that one for?
That's what they drive every day, every day. And it's, well, it's 16-years-old, so you get my point. And it's not going to be a lot of money. If we went out and bought a loaded four-door truck, that's not what we're buying. We're going to buy something that's a couple years old, long bed, single cab, work truck that probably won't leave town, but they drive every day. So I've got some notes made. I'm doing some checking. Keep that in the back of your mind.
That's not going to smoke in either, right?
Right. We've already had that discussion a couple times. Sewer department, maintenance and repairs, 60K there for some sewer repairs that we talked about, that we do all the time. That will come up later. Then I'm on flip page under water supply. You can see you've got water tower painting at 575. The treatment tank, that needs to go up because that's not high enough. Remember, he gave us the numbers, they're in your list. That needs to be 400. Public works and insurance all went up. We're in pretty good shape there. And then police department salaries were increased to reflect the change in pay. And... The volunteer salaries went from 10,000 to 12,000 because we've got more volunteers, and they're sending more functions. So a little change there, nothing significant.
For fire department?
Yep, yep. 10 goes to 12. All right.
Do you need that allocated anymore for equipment, with more volunteers?
I did not. We've currently, hold on, Keith, let me look, see where we're at. That's a reminder. We got $5,000 in there right now. You know what?
The turnout gear?
Yeah, we need, so remember, we do a 50/50 with the rule. So let me share with you what I've talked to Rick about. Since the firehouse was painted by the city, Rick wants the rule to pay more for uniforms. Okay, but that being said, what have we, under equipment, you've got $8,000 in there. I'm going to add 1,009 because if they, if we would do, if we would do three sets of turnout gear, they're about $3,000 a set.
You better go pricing again.
They were, they were $3,000 a set.
You want a decent set, you're looking at just under 5,000 a set.
Okay, so...
Yeah, that's what I said.
So we need to ask rule for more money, okay? But anyway, I bumped that up on my equipment here. Number 10, really no changes. Number 12, municipal retirement fund, all those high amount employee shares and all that. That's going up to 50K. It was at 32. We need to add some to that because of employees, you get it. Golf course under number 17, the only change that I had in there from the previous one is under salaries and payroll, we're at 170. And I think your copy has 150, doesn't it?
120.
120.
120, yeah. Should be 170. All right. All right, all right. I see. All right, let's go through the golf course. I see what happened when she went through the pages. All the changes didn't happen on the golf course. So let's go through the golf course in detail because it's significantly different than what you have, and I want it to be right. For maintenance and repairs, the third one down, should be 10,000. Materials, 15,000. Gas and electric, 15,000. Equipment purchase, 30. Equipment rentals and lease, 5,000. Publications, 100. Golf cart rental, 35K. Purchase payment, 30,000. Retail food, 35. Salaries and payroll, 170. License permits and fees, 2,000. Telephone, 4,000.
I've got 150 on mine. I met with Randy yesterday.
For salaries?
For salaries and payroll, I have 150.
It's not high enough. Because we're looking at for the next...
Because it adjusts next year.
Yeah, for the next, starting, that's where we're on. The golf course is on a calendar year, the city's on a fiscal year, so we're going to catch half of this year and half of next year. And it needs to be higher, Amber, and there's no shame in putting it higher, all right? Doesn't mean moving the spendable, but I just wanted to make sure we had the right number. All right, that was, those ones were the most changes. All right, and then the last one, we're on the back page. So you should have just, business development district should be a total of 85K. Project, 60,000, and then the director, 25, so that's where we're at.
It's in there, but it's not. I mean, you...
Where's the police department?
It's on, it's number eight. It says police department at the bottom and the stuff on the top.
Yep. It should be in there, Amber.
Right there.
Can we have the radios in there?
Yep.
Okay, there's.
Purchase, security cameras and equipment. And that's there. You didn't need radios, you meant cameras, 35K.
Yes, that's what I meant.
And so they'll be installing them soon. So my ask for you is just to review it. Call me if you've got questions. And then we'll be prepared to review it again and vote on it in two weeks. We good? Keith, we good? All right. Atlanta logo sign replaced a discussion on that. We talked about this. You can pass this around. This is the bottom sign. Oh, wait, you probably got one. This is the sign below Bunyan. Call Paul, whatever we want to call him. ADF is willing to put a new sign up. Take the old one down, no cost to the city. And it will have the Atlanta logo on it.
Is this the sign you were working on?
Yep.
So what is your sign that you worked on in comparison to? Is this one just stickers?
Different, it's covered with stickers now. It used to be the old city logo or the current city. The logo is, it's on flyers or anything else that I can show on, the one that... And then the one that submitted for that, so this one would have the new tourism logo on it with a QR code and so forth. The one that was submitted for this, which I would assume you would have in that packet, is the way it was, just the old city, or current city logo, the one that's on the trucks, that older logo. Not using the new tourist logo. That's what was submitted to Scott, who is the sign, yeah. Because when I was getting numbers from him, he informed me that Bill already submitted the order, so...
So why wasn't, I mean, why wasn't there the coordination with Scott?
I just came to know you with the sign. Said, we'll pay for it, and we'll cost the city, and we need to get the city of Atlanta's name on it, and I think that's where we're all in agreement. There's hundreds of photographs going across the world on that, and we don't get the city of Atlanta's name on it.
Can we do the sticker up there? Can we do the sticker sign up there? I do like it.
Oh, and that's part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, the sticker sign is part of it, so they can put new ones on there, correct?
You can if you want them to have stickers.
Yeah.
I just think we just put a separate board up for people to put stickers on, then maybe the other one will stay.
You can, yeah. It's just like the Giants will get stickers too. I mean, people, it's a thing. People just do these stickers. In Chicago, they just moved everything up about 12 feet, so nobody can reach it to sticker signs anymore. So the signs are all going up high. But that's up to you. I mean, you can do stickers, you can put a board. Some places put a board, a sign on the back. There's many different things you can do. But the sign itself, like the mayor said, doesn't show anything. You take a picture, it's just a bunch of stickers.
Right.
So with our logo or QR code, or saying Atlanta, Illinois, those type of things is something that I brought to the council last season, and...
So the QR code, if that's on there, um...
There's not.
There is no QR code now.
No, 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 no. The new one, if there were a QR, it could be scanned from a picture even, right?
Correct. It would be big enough to be scanned. It depends how far back their picture is, of course, how wide it is. But if it's close enough that they can do it, then they can get right off that.
And the QR code takes them where?
To the city, to the city's tourism website. To the city's tourism website. It could really be pointed anywhere you want. Obviously, the city's just going to show them, this is the Bunyan statue, Atlanta. They can see information and then they get the map of everything else around and all the attractions. But the big thing in any kind of a photo is you want them to have Atlanta, Illinois. It's specific to the Illinois. People don't know that. So, when it's in a picture, that's your primary thing. The QR code's great and it'll add to it. But you definitely want that. And for the branding side of it, using the logo that we have and everything else, it's like these flyers don't anymore. So, now there's all the logos, all the other things.
And that was part of Whitney's stuff that she had brought, correct?
No. Whitney... So, you have that original logo, if I may. So, you have this original logo like this.
Because she worked with I and she would...
So, this is the one that Chris created years ago. It's on your trucks and different things like that, right?
Correct.
And then the one that when Whitney came, she had a new one designed, I believe by ISU, and it just said Atlanta with a little Illinois. And it's what you see in the park on the billboard over there. So, it was different. And then when I started, Chris said she didn't like that logo and went back to this one. And I said, well, we need to brand it different, so I created another logo. But now, why it's not being used, I don't patrol this. So, Whitney's logo was that kind of peach colored one. It may be different colors.
It was on the billboard that we looked at and we approved all of those, correct?
Yeah, because we had a lot more options.
Oh, yeah, she had a whole portfolio of stuff.
She set that up with ISU Designs straight.
Yeah, it was incredible.
And then, if my memory is certainly right, there was a little bit of an issue with Chris and Whitney. And then the big issue was then Chris emailed the professor at ISU asking what the point was and what not. And then I haven't seen the...
Have you seen the whole portfolio?
Signs.
The entire...
From ISU? I don't have it. It wasn't in the stuff. At least I haven't found it in the old... I don't use the old laptop, so it may be in there.
Yeah, Houston's really nice.
But, yeah, it's... I have some of the pictures, some of the stuff that was kind of got used, but I haven't been through like the whole portfolio.
So, the question we've got here is, get a new sign, no cost, with the Atlanta logo on it. And the QR code is really nice, but from the photographs, nobody's going to put on the QR code if they don't look at the photographs.
I think with all the confusion of what's going on, we need to... Separation of church and state. I think we need to quit muddying the waters with the betterment.
Yeah, I've already stated my stance on it and I stand firm. I won't vote for anything that they bring to the council.
And I would not take away that they've done great things throughout the community, throughout the years. I appreciate everything they've done, but I do agree it has caused a lot of unnecessary issues, problems, concerns, what right, wrong, or indifferent. So, I think...
May I ask a question? Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let the train go by. He can't hear anything. Alright. Scott, I'll give you an opportunity.
Okay, so just my quick question on that is, with the betterment fund, if they're should paying for it, will they pay for it and will use our design?
I think...
Why don't we just do our own?
Okay, so what I... We're not talking very much money.
I don't think that's the point. Money's not the point.
So, why don't we just put our own up and be done with it? Is that what I hear?
Do I guess?
Put our own up?
I think we just do our own, in that way, yes.
Let's see what we got. I only could give you this picture because I knew what this was and I haven't been able to talk to anybody. So, I just took a picture of that.
What size is that, you know?
I don't know, it's four foot by six.
Three by fours, something like that. I don't know the exact...
That's the same size that is being considered...
Yeah, it would be a replacement board. It's literally the new board with just the logo in the center, and that's it.
We'll do something different. I'll get you another picture. We'll just...
Can you provide a drawing of what your design was?
Yep. By the time we get this done, sure as he's will be able to. But we'll be ready next year.
Christmas. Christmas, the Paul and the Santa.
If they pay for it, then not betterment possible.
Yes. Alright, we answered that question. I know where we're at, okay? Fee charge program discussion. So, remember this, again, no cost to the city. You want to have the QR code put on there to let anybody that plugs in, to go to a business in town. All you have to do is say, yep, we want to do it. If not, that's alright, we won't. I don't think it makes a big difference one way or the other because we all know there's only two cars can be charged at a time. And we all know how many vehicles come through currently, maybe in the future. But it's no charge to the city. Do you want to have... Give them permission to put that sticker on our electric charger?
No, I don't. I think I agree with what Andy just said, that the separation, and again, we're presented with another discussion action presented by them. So, I'll give you my answer, it's going to be no. And that's my discussion on it.
What do the rest of you think?
I don't have a problem with it.
Can you explain again what it was?
Okay, so, you see the QR code?
Okay.
Okay, there's a program that if you're plugged, that goes for the electric charge program, nationally designed to charge the people that charge their cars up. They can get a special deal by each business that sets their own up. This code allows them to see in town who's got a special deal. For example, Chubbies. Chubbies would say you get french fries and coke for a dollar. They would scan that code and it would show the deals that were in town.
And who's putting the sticker on? It's not the betterment, it's the turn...
Yeah, I was the betterment, I was putting it up.
It has been sent to them, yes. They...
So, my question would be, is there any sort of financial incentive to the betterment for having...
No, there is not. It is not. There's no kickbacks.
That's what I was trying to look at.
Anything else. You can see on the discussion of the charge deals program. It's simply to help businesses in town.
That's what my take on it is, it's strictly going to be on whatever business wants to participate. They would help them.
Right, and if there's something that somebody's giving for free, when they're there, they'll probably buy something else.
Correct.
So...
Correct.
Do they go to all businesses or who?
So, the businesses are contacted, yes. And they have to decide whether they want to participate.
I think your question though was all businesses, right?
Yeah, like the hotel, the hotel, algea, whatever.
Correct. I don't think that was answered directly. How do we know that all businesses were consulted during this process?
I think... I can't answer that question, I don't know.
I would vote no. And if we can't answer that question, then we don't know all the details about the program.
I think anybody can participate that would like to participate.
That wasn't my question.
Aren't probably going to know if it's available.
They won't.
So, if we, as the council, come up with a list of...
No, it's not. The council is not providing each business would do it.
No, no, no. I guess at the direction of just to make sure, or they provide a list of who they're reaching out to. So, if there was somebody that isn't included, that we'd make that recommendation that they would... Just so it's more inclusive?
I can't answer that.
I mean, if it's going on as a piece of city equipment, there's no reason that every business in the city should be contacted for the same opportunity, in my opinion. And that's what my argument is, is we don't know. I mean, you're taking the word that every business is consulted, but again, there's no documentation of that being done. So, again, hearsay to me.
So, I'll give you the details. We only can tell you what it says, Keith. Local business within walking distance that are offering discounts or other offers on products. It says right under the background.
While they're getting their car charged.
Exactly.
They can walk somewhere, like Missy's or Chubbies or somewhere uptown and get something at a discount.
So, why is supporting any local business that wants to participate?
And Vicki might want to participate in it.
And there is a fee to the business?
No, no fee to the business. No.
According to what's that there is. It's $24 a year.
That's what I'm telling you. We don't have all the information in front of us for getting printed in it, but do you want to do this and just, here you go? No.
So, you think there's a fee?
I know there is. I just said it. It's a transparent pricing, $1.99 per month.
For the business?
For the businesses.
Participate in it.
To participate in it, yeah.
Who gets that money then?
This charge deals.
But who?
Well, I have no idea that.
I know, I know. That was a two-sided question.
I think we need some more information on what charge deal is.
I'll send it back to get more information because I told you what I know.
Yep.
In print. Alright. I'll send that back. Last thing, under new business. All the businesses right across the street on First Street, the seven that have opened up to... Have asked if they could have a couple benches like we have. I provided a photograph of the bench that is right next to... Well, right next to the statue uptown, the artist shop. It's slightly over 300 bucks, alright? In your packet are the plastic feet for benches, and we put treated tuba floors on it. You can see it. You can see my picture, it's very good. It's about 300 bucks. They were willing to help fund that. I don't think they should. We funded all the others. The other benches, this bench that was over there, Keith built that bench 20 years ago. And in March, I had the city crew redo it. It was junk. After 20 years, it had went to crap, so we put a new one in there. It's about... They're about $300. You can see from the quote in here that Sarah got, so...
Can we use tips money of businesses?
We can pay for it. Andy, we can pay for it. It's $600. But there is... There would be probably, well... Maybe on business district, I would need to check. Maybe. But it's $600.
It's a question.
But it's $600.
Yeah.
For two of them, yeah. And so, I wanted to bring it up to the council, what you think. I think the city should own them, that we don't have to worry about where we place them or anything else. If we have somebody that contributes money to one, the metal ones were all donated, so you know, those were all donated. But the two wood ones we have over on Arch Street are owned by the city. If you... They requested that we put some over there. You guys want to? That's what they cost, slightly over 300 bucks. I think we have to just put two of them over there and be done with it. But that's my recommendation. What do you guys think?
I think that's fair.
If we've got the money, we'll see what...
And I agree, we should own them rather than having them contribute. And have some discrepancy about who's the owner.
Keith, what do you think?
I don't have an opinion right now.
Well, if you want to put the benches on there, the two benches is slightly over $600. Somebody needs to make a motion.
I'll make the motion that we spend $600 or more than that to install two benches on First Street.
The motion by Karen Horn is there second. Second by Amber.
Nicole, Karen?
Yes.
Amber?
I'm standing.
Grant?
Yes.
Gibson?
Yes.
Alvin?
Yes.
Alright. Michael, any updates for the council?
Nothing really substantial. I'm always available. If you guys have any questions, call. I know from time to time, council members call in and have some information. I'm generally available and try to return calls the same day, if not the next day. So, if you guys ever have any questions, like what came up between the last meeting and now, feel free to call my office.
Alright.
Do you do Teams?
Michael?
What's that?
Do you use Teams or anything at all?
Microsoft Teams?
Yeah.
We use it internally for office correspondence. And we do, like, I do Teams meetings with other individuals.
Yeah, that's right. If I email you to schedule like a date for a 15-minute Teams meeting, would that be acceptable?
That's fine, yeah. Phone call or Teams meeting. Yeah, that's fine.
I was wondering about, is there a status on that house on Hamilton Street that we talked about a few months ago?
The...
606 Hamilton?
Yes, is that across the street? I know exactly where it's at. We got the title searched back on that, I believe, and it's ready to go forward now with the petition to declare it abandoned. So, I'll make a note to talk to Adam about that next week.
Which one is it here?
Well, Hamilton, I think it was...
Did you build Bailey House one?
Living Per Lee, I think, is the one that's...
Yeah, right down there.
Owns it.
Yeah. Build Welchel House.
Yeah, the vested title owner is Marie Welchel.
Yeah.
And then she passed away. No probate case, so we don't know who her heirs at law are. And that's the difficulty. We'll have to publish most likely for notice of that petition. Or any unknown heirs at law.
Okay. That's the gentleman that attended a meeting probably four months ago about his property value. And at that time, we discussed it, and I think there was a little bit of a holdup, but it sounds like... Yeah, I'd be happy to see it go to the honest with you. The windows are out, it's a...
The other option is the city came before with a fast-track demo, which I know in the past, we... There's a memo that I sent to, it might have been Fred at the time, explaining how we can address these issues. There's multiple ways that the city can move forward on that. The one that we did previously that... Was that? I don't even know where it was.
This house right here.
In that one, we did a petition to declare the property abandoned and then ended up getting vested fee simple title, meaning the city owned it 100%. No one other... No one else could make a claim. On the fast-track demo, you go in, demolish it, you file a lien, but the city never takes ownership unless they foreclose on that lien. So, doing the petition to declare it abandoned kind of skips that step of filing the lien and then having to foreclose on that lien.
Sure.
I think that makes sense.
A question about abandoned homes. So, if no one's living there and haven't lived there for three, four, or five years...
Property taxes have to be delinquent or water bill has to be...
But if the property taxes are still paid?
So then you go to, the statute says water bills. The water bill has been unpaid for two years, so in that situation, city, I believe, shuts off water. If it's vacant and abandoned and not in use. So then by default, there is no water bill that's being paid during that time. But it's two years of unpaid taxes or water bills. And then it also has to be a danger to the public. So vacant, property taxes or water bills, delinquent, and then danger to the public, which is relatively low threshold. Whenever you're talking about vacant buildings that are open and accessible.
Is the house behind you, Vicki, Karen?
That's what I'm talking about. I've been fussing about it for months. But there's weeds that are growing clear around the front porch now. You can't even, I think if you step on the porch, you might fall through.
Somebody live there, though?
No.
No.
No, no one lives there. Steve Nichols moved from there. He lives in a different place.
This is where I saw a light on in there, but, okay. I'm not going to say.
I don't know. Maybe there's somebody that's...
So Kelly, Kelly, the last time the water bill was, has it been less than $10?
Shouldn't have a good thing.
It's not for the site.
All right.
Thank you.
My updates are the sheet enclosed in the packets that says 24, 25 project updates, estimated cost. Andy, you and I talked about this briefly. There's some things that we've talked about. There's things we've talked about. I think the, the three things probably on the top are the walking trail, splash park, and the ballpark fence. Everything else falls under typical upgrades that we've talked about already. So, um... That's a starting point for us right now. And how we move forward with a splash park is something that we need to discuss. And how we come up with that kind of money and where we locate it. And Andy, if I can get that company contact information that was here a year ago, would you be willing to follow up with them a little bit?
Sure.
Okay.
Can I ask about ballpark fence? What is that?
Yep. On, so I've talked to Mark on Field Two, which is the second field to the back where the fireworks are shut off. They always put a temporary fence back there. In other words, it's plastic, and it's time to put a permanent fence back there. So they were talking about that.
Okay.
And that's all for me. I will share with you the, the Sand Pro, Amber, you're aware of this, Sand Pro quit. We put a new engine in it, $1,600. I think it's a no brainer. I think we're good. I talked with Mark this morning. They took the old one out. It's got eight bolts. Took an hour to take the old one out. It's got new tires. It looks brand new. I said, Mark, why wouldn't we do this? He says, Adam, I don't know why you would. I would be tickled to death with it, so I don't see a reason why we can't either, and I just...
Not what came from the golf course like three years ago?
Yeah, I wanted your opinion, and I think we'll just, it's a maintenance or repair item, but I wasn't really just... To Andy's point, it's a operations thing. Sorry, it's like, it's more than four tires on a car, but anyway. When Mark said go for it, I was like, well, I want to talk to you guys and let you know. I'll move forward with that then.
Can Adam just go and do it?
Yep, yep. All right. Roundtable, Andy?
Karen gets to start.
Karen?
I don't have anything.
Keith?
Yeah, I think, let's throw it out there. Some of the stuff that we heard tonight was really disturbing to me and... Not very acceptable. I think we definitely need to reevaluate how we're operating as a city and, and discuss... Yeah, I... Yeah. I, I feel like it's, we've had this discussion over and over again and bringing it up all the time, but it's, it never, nothing ever happens with it. And then after getting this stuff tonight, I think we have deep issues of how we're operating. And I think we really need to reevaluate how we're operating as a city and make changes moving forward.
Karen? Amber?
Is there a reason why he hasn't been paid for $188?
I'm not sure we know what it is.
There's a receipt in here. It's the...
Does it tell you what it is?
If the name's on the receipt, yeah.
What is it?
Kitchen mic cables.
So what are they used for? I'm going to ask them.
They were for the videos off the, at the televisions that are around in different locations. That I discussed at the last meeting that I was here.
So we, I think... If I look at this, I don't know what those videos...
You've had them for almost 50 days and never asked me or required, so...
So these are those, like at the...
All the interactive guy.
Yeah, it plays the video. It's a video player and then a cable connector.
Correct. So you play it?
No, that's a player. It's like a VCR, but it's...
That's what I'm asking for.
Right, it's a play, little player, plugs in and has a little cable between the player and the television to play the video on a loop.
Stay here after and let's figure out where they're at and how we were supposed to know what they were used for, based on this evidence.
Yeah, I think that was Amber's question, though, like, if that... To me, 15 days is too long on whether to ask what this is for or what's not, like...
You know, it's a double edged sword. Somebody could have called us and said...
But from my perspective, at work, I've had to pay for expenses on my own.
Sure, yeah.
And I submit my receipts, and if there's a question, then it's asked. To have $188 sitting out there for this amount of time, I just don't think it's acceptable that, that we don't... At least inquire or pay them or... I don't know.
Andy, any query to take 30 seconds to type out in an email? Just going to throw it out there. And I can give you clarification on what I'm looking for.
Anything else, Amber?
Fireworks Friday, if there is a rain, do we have a rain?
Working with the fireworks company, we don't have a rain date set yet, no. I've talked with them two times on the phone this last week. I've talked, I'm glad you brought it up, talked to the chief police. They're going to be closing parts of Six, parts of North. He's got three officers on duty, so you guys all know, there's three officers on duty. Dave Renfro's doing the National Anthem and handling all that and the announcement. And we're set. So Chad, like I said, got three officers on duty and...
It's not too dry if it doesn't rain to do that?
Not yet, no, after the rain we just got, so. Fair question. Andy?
Just, I'm just going to echo what Keith says. We just need to look at some of this information that was brought to us.
I will accept the motion to adjourn. So move.
So second?
Motion by Haley and a second by Karen to adjourn the meeting.
Rule call. Horn?
Yes.
Simon?
Yeah.
Grant?
Yeah.
Bitcha?
Yes.